Thank you for joining us this evening, regular scheduled council meeting in the Park City City Council on October 23rd, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Do you would you call the rolls?
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Sosada.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Randy Bailey. Jim Schrader. Mr. Mayor, you have a forum.
All right. Tonight Pastor Jerry Winkler is going to lead in the invocation and Councilman Tom Jones is going to lead in the pledge. If our bed please stand.
Join me if you will in prayer. Father, we want to pause, take a moment to be quiet and also to say thank you. Thank you for a beautiful day. Thank you for those who serve our community, those who are here this evening. Thank you for this nation that we call home, the rich diversity, the freedoms that we enjoy, that all came with a price. We don't take that for granted, so we stop to say thank you. Also ask wisdom in this meeting, pray for us to remain a strong and vibrant and growing community. We thank you for these things and we ask your blessing in the name of the marvelous and wonderful Lord Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
And Ben?
Second that.
We have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes six zero. Our first item on the agenda tonight is awards and presentations, and I have a proclamation for you this evening for October 23rd through October 31st as Red Ribbon Week. Whereas the alcohol and drug abuse in this nation has reached an epidemic stages, and whereas it's imperative that visible unified protection education efforts by community members be launched to eliminate the demands for drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign offers citizens the opportunity to discriminate their commitment to a drug-free lifestyles, no use of illegal drugs, no illegal use of illegal drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will be celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through the 31st, 2018, and whereas businesses, government, parents, law enforcement, media, medical institutions, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, and service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during the week-long campaign, and whereas the community of Park City, Kansas, further commits its resources to ensure the success of Red Ribbon Campaign. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Ray Mann, the mayor of Park City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October 23rd through the 31st, 2018, as Red Ribbon Week, and encourage its citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week, but all year long, making it a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free city. Is there a motion? John?
Motion to approve proclamation.
And Tom?
I second that.
We have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes six zero. The next item on the agenda is public forum, and we have a couple of people signed up tonight, and we'll start with Larry Pearlman. Larry?
I brought my own timer. You said I had the timer. Okay. You got first slide? Okay, we're good through the slides. I'm gonna go ahead and start. There we go. My name is Larry Pearlman, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I am the principal of Chisholm Trail Elementary School, where I've been, this is my sixth year serving there. I'm also a member of the Park City Pride Civic Organization, and I'm actually here on behalf of that group tonight. And so what I'm here to speak to you about is the need for a highway sign for McLean Park, which I call the unknown jewel of Park City. Next slide. So my question is why is McLean Park a secret? And if you don't live in Park City, it is a secret. And I don't live in Park City, and until I had an affiliation with the city, I didn't know that it existed. Even on the Park City website, it's not listed as an attraction, it's listed under parks. And I think it deserves probably more than just being known as a park, because it is, as far as I'm concerned, one of the top attractions in Park City. And so up there is a list of the amenities that are on the website of all the different things that are there. It does not mention the disc golf course, which has been installed recently, so that probably would want to add that to that. Go ahead and next slide, please. So as I mentioned, I know that the park has a lot of things there, and I know that it costs a great deal of money to build, it costs probably a great deal of money to maintain, but if you're driving along the highway, there's no way for you to know that it's there. And so, next slide. So my question is to you, is it a goal for it to be an attraction, where people would see it and come to Park City and spend their dollars here in Park City because they knew it's there? So here's a picture of it from 135, driving northbound. I did this pulled over, so that was safe, and other pictures I did while I was driving. But you can see, it's hard to tell what's there. There's nothing that signifies as you're driving along that all these wonderful things are here, or that they're public places, or they're places that they could go, or what kinds of things are there. Go ahead, next slide. And then from the southbound, you can see, you know, lots of advertisements, there's billboards for some local businesses, there's a fried pies billboard, there's an Applebee's billboard that's further up, as you're approaching the bridge at 71st Street, or by 69th Street where the bridge is. Next slide. And again, like right when you're coming up to the park, like you can't tell if you're going southbound that anything's there. If there's trees that kind of obscure the view, you can see the lights there, but if you're coming from headed southbound, you can't tell at all what's there. Next slide. So my suggestion, or my idea, was that you would have some type of signage that would be located in the park on city property, and that would have the name of the park, location, and access, because if, even for people, they have no idea how to get to the park. And if you're coming from the north, it's really hard to find it. If you're coming from the other direction, you're driving up hydraulic, you can find it, but if you try to come in from the north, it's really tricky. It would give you an opportunity to advertise special events, like the Fall Festival and things like that, to people who are just driving on the highway or going past to other communities. So, next slide. So I just made a little like mock-up, like quick, it's nothing fancy, but like something that would be like that. You wouldn't have to have necessarily all those things listed there, but that's kind of, to me, that was large enough that you could see it from the highway and know kind of the things that were here. Fall Festival, you could have something that you could change that would say, you know, for the Fourth of July, or Fall Festival, other community events. I know we have the mobile, nice electronic signs in town, but this would get attraction of people coming up and down the interstate, where they're just driving past that park and would have no idea that all these things are there. So that's my presentation, and it's just kind of to present, I don't have a motion or a proposal, I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the council. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions before you step away? John?
I have one. Are they talking about a recommendation of this being behind the BMX track there next to 135, or were you talking about the sign being?
I think it would be along kind of the, well, it would be probably near the BMX track. I think if there's trees there, that might make it a challenge, it might need.
It's open along the fence.
Where it's open along the fence, I think anywhere along in there, it would probably want to have it two-sided, so it could be seen from either direction. Something large enough that it's going to capture the eyes. I don't know that you want to put like something the size of a billboard, obviously, that people might think that is an eyesore, but something that's large enough that people would, it would get people's attention and at least let people know that, you know, wow, I didn't know, you know, my kids love to skateboard, or BMX, or disc golf, or these other things that we have. I know that even to get the community there, it may not be a thing, but you could attract, you know, I think bringing people in would be good. Again, I don't know, you know, I know that there's, you know, like tourism and things like that, that might look at something like this. I don't, I don't like, I don't know all the details, I just had the idea and thought it was worthwhile to share.
Absolutely. Does anybody else have any questions? Not seeing any. Thank you for bringing that.
Okay, appreciate your time.
Okay. Next, we have John Walter.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. My name is John Waltner. I live in the city of Heston, and I have long been associated with the REAP organization, the Regional Economic Area Partnership. Let's just tell you just a very brief little bit about myself, because I do want to be brief this evening, but I served as mayor of Heston from 1985 to 2010 for 25 years. So I've been to a lot of city council meetings, at least in the city of Heston. I also spent 17 years working with Harvey County, 10 years as Special Projects Director, and seven years as county administrator. So I've been to plenty of local government meetings, and before I say anything else, I'd simply want to commend you and applaud you for the work you do, because if you've done as much of this kind of thing as I have, you understand quite a little bit about the commitment that it takes, the time that it takes, the sacrifices that you make, and also the incredible rewards that you get from doing this kind of work. So congratulations and thank you for what you do for this community. I've already said I spent quite a bit of time working in local government, and when I was with Harvey County in the early 2000s, still as mayor of Heston, I became associated with the Regional Economic Area Partnership, began going to their meetings, and really became a very, very keen fan of the organization, because I can tell you in a nutshell, what's important about REAP is that it tries to promote regional prosperity through building relationships among elected officials in the region and building trust. I can tell you, when I first began working with REAP, the level of trust among elected officials throughout this entire region was not as high as it is now. I'm sure there are a number of reasons for that, but I think REAP does get some credit for that, through developing relationships face-to-face, working with issues that affect us that are larger than your, than what just applies only to your city limits, within your city limits. Those kinds of things are really very, very important for us to recognize and work with one another to accomplish. So that's one reason I became very, very enthused about the REAP organization. Your city is very well represented by the mayor and by Councilmember Tom Jones, faithful attenders of the REAP events. Just simply want you to know my reasons for being here tonight are twofold. First of all, simply to say thank you. Since I've retired, I work a little bit with the REAP organization in member relations. One of the things that we wanted to do is just simply make contact with as many of our member organizations as we possibly can. Simply, first of all, to say thanks. You folks have been mayor, you've been members of REAP for a good number of years, you've been active participants, we very much appreciate that. Secondly, just a word about REAP. I have had placed at each of your places this 2017, this brochure that's a 2017 annual report. It's not a ponderous annual report by any means, it just simply illustrates some of the things that the REAP organization has done in the last year, we'll have a new one of these coming out soon. If you open it up, first thing you see are the, is the list of all of the member organizations, the 26 towns and counties that are members of the organization, and the current, at least in 2017, representative, official representative from each of those communities. You also see, if you open it up, there's identification of some of the things that the REAP organization has worked with. We work primarily to build relationships and build partnerships. We partner with the BREG organization in Wichita, the Blueprint for Regional Economic Growth, something that I'm sure you're somewhat familiar with. We work at developing partnerships with our state legislators and with our federal delegation. One of the things that's very important to REAP is to continue to promote the importance of commercial air service, now at the new Eisenhower Airport, a very, very significant economic driver for this entire region. We also work closely with those organizations that work to get major highway projects in this region, such as WAMPO. And one, of course, you're very familiar with, is simply right down I-135 from where you folks live. And it's a project that is long overdue, but when that North Junction project is completed, and it is now at the beginning stages of that, it's going to be a very, very significant issue, very, very significant addition. We also work at convening the economic development directors from all of our member communities. Economic development is an intensely competitive kind of an activity, but we also do firmly believe that if we work together and do these things together, we're all going to benefit. And reasonably successful in getting them to talk to one another in a pretty positive way over the last number of years. So I just simply want to bring your attention to that. We're not going to go through that entire brochure, but in your leisure, please browse through it and take a look at it. In closing, I'd like to just mention a meeting that is going to be held on November the 1st, and we'd really love to see every single one of you, plus the two absent members, if it can work in your schedules. On November 1st at 1 o'clock in the afternoon, from 1:00 to 4:30, at the Hughes Metroplex, 29th and Oliver, it's the building that's owned by Wichita State University, so we're going to hold an economic development summit. And I just want to find out quickly, is this something that you are aware of yet?
Yes.
Yes, and yes. I would hope that all of you have received that invitation. It appears to be something that could be a very, very interesting meeting. We'll have a fellow from Kansas City, Tim Cowden is going to be there, he works with the Kansas City Development Council, he's going to talk first of all about the importance of doing these things regionally. And that means a change for all of us in some ways. So he's going to talk about that. There'll also be very specific discussions of some things having to do with economic development, Andrew Nave with the Greater Wichita Partnership, we'll talk a little bit about that. There will be breakout sessions that will focus on things like exports. Karen Page is a person whom you know with Kansas Global, a real driver of that whole effort in this part of the state, will be there. There will also be breakout sessions on the kinds of things, specific nuts and bolts things that work, and maybe don't work, in our communities when we try to promote economic development. So I think it should be a really good time. We'll wind it up with Jeremy Hill from the Center for Economic Development and Business Research at Wichita State University, who has the latest data and facts and figures on practically everything imaginable having to do with economic development. So it should prove to be a very interesting afternoon, and if you haven't attended REAP meetings in the past, it'd be a great opportunity for you to get to know some people, some people there. So look forward to seeing you there. Again, I just want you to know, I very much appreciate you being willing to let me take a few minutes of your time this evening to let you know about the REAP organization and how much we appreciate your membership. So, thank you very much, unless you have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Not seeing any. Thank you, appreciate it.
To the mayor, thank you.
That was all we had for public forum this evening, so we'll move on to staff reports, and we'll start with our Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Public Works Report, October 23rd, 2018. Parks Department, we started the process of winterizing irrigation systems, and right now, we're currently at 75% complete on those. We did some winter prep, mounted a sand and salt spreader and a plow on one of their vehicles. We also removed some graffiti from Habager Park playground equipment, that was pretty, that was pretty substantial. And as a reminder, Russian Lim Day is still scheduled for 3 November. Street Department, mowing and trimming on medians, and we edged 61st Street sidewalks. We replaced a traffic island to lower the profile in the city approach by the Days Inn and Best Western, to keep it from getting hit from the tractor trailers. And Street Department also did some winter prep and mounted a sand, salt spreader, and a plow. And we started repairs to the 53rd Street Bridge, which is coming along pretty good, pouring concrete tomorrow, so. Water Sewer Department, the average work order per day was 25, and those can range anywhere from line locates to checking for leaks and angle stop repairs. UMC is our sewer contractor, they're going to be, they're due to start cambering our sewer lines tomorrow. We're going to do 7,130 linear feet of just our problem areas that we've got predetermined. And Water Department installed five new residential service connections.
Does anybody have any questions for it? Not seeing any. Thank you, appreciate it. Next, we'll hear from our Chief of Police.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, they had three different things I wanted to talk to you about tonight. One is a staffing update on where we're at with hiring and retention, and also wanted to talk about promotions and some community events that we've been involved in here recently. So currently in the Police Department, we have two openings for police officer positions that are unfilled. We have one opening for a code enforcement officer. That leaves us with one code enforcement officer for the time being. We're actively advertising, recruiting, working through background investigations and so forth for those. We have one officer who's in the academy right now, I think he's on about the fourth or fifth week out of 14. And then we have two other officers who are in their field training period riding with other officers, and they are, one is nearly finished, another is roughly about halfway. So with those openings that we have for police officers alone with one in the academy, two in field training, essentially puts us down five positions. We've seen a real drop in the number of applications that we're receiving here just in the last few months, and this is not unique to us. Here in Sedgwick County, we have a local chiefs association, we meet once a month. It's pretty well attended, the sheriff is involved also, FBI and so forth, and we all talk about these issues, and you hear the same story over and over. Everyone is experiencing the same problems, and just to different degrees. So there are a variety of reasons why I think we've had this recent drop that we've seen in applications, and then there's the more long-term chronic problems that we've had. One issue that we've seen more recently, of course, is the economy. Typically, when the economy heats up and gets better, private employment gets better, public employment becomes more difficult. That generally is because the private sector pays better than the public sector. And so we're seeing that right now. We're glad the economy's doing well, but that does cause some difficulties for us. Overall, departments around us, those that you would say are the competition, we don't really consider ourselves competitors, but partners, but we do compete for the same pool of applicants. And our other suburban departments around us are beginning to raise their wages. So where with the raise that was, that you graciously gave here a couple of years ago, that put us like head and shoulders above the larger group of departments, those are beginning to raise their wages as well. So we're still, I think, doing pretty well as far as our wage, but you know, again, that's one issue. We've also seen just a general decline in interest in law enforcement as a career. That is, that's a more chronic, long-term problem that we've seen, but that's with the violence in law enforcement that you see, towards law enforcement, that you see that always affects our recruiting. The increased expectations and the scrutiny that law enforcement officers receive, you see that on the news, of course, those are, those all add together, those are the more chronic issues that we're facing. What we see is everybody competing for the same small pool of qualified applicants. And we'll see this where people apply with us, and we require them to list, if they are applying with other law enforcement agencies, they have to list those, and we'll see where they apply with 10, 15 other agencies all around us. And so we're all competing for the same pool of qualified applicants. You know, you have the pool of applicants, and then you have the pool of qualified applicants. And the qualified applicant pool is really small and it's shrinking. What we're seeing is that that pool that is qualified is starting to be depleted. We've got some large departments around us, Wichita being one of them, that are not only hiring to make up for retirements, you know, retirements are, there's a big mass of, this is not just in law enforcement, in private sector as well, baby boomer generation generally retiring, and that's creating pressure for hiring, and we're seeing that. But just to keep up with retirements is difficult for a lot of agencies, but you take one like Wichita, where they're adding, I think it's somewhere around 35 officers a year for the next three years, and so that's putting pressure on the applicant pool as well. I was reading an article yesterday, I just want to quote you like a couple of sentences from that, because I thought it was pretty telling, and this is from a lady who's the Government Relations Director for the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, and she said, in reference to the recruiting hiring problem, she said, "From what we see, it's geographic." And she went on to explain by that, what she means is that rural and smaller agencies can't pay as well and find a lot more movement for people looking for a salary bump. Major agencies and the state level pay a little better and retain people consistently." So it's another issue that we're facing. Again, that's Texas, North Texas is doing very well, but they're facing that. Finally, people have tried different things. I know that in particular Wichita PD tried a lateral transfer program here within the last year or two. In fact, we lost one of our officers to that program, a good officer, and we hate to see him go, but that generally has not been successful across the board, and the article that I was reading here was saying that for Texas as well. What it causes again is this shrinking pool, eventually the pool of applicants becomes too small. Those are stopgap measures, but they don't necessarily help. So we're doing a lot of things differently, I'll say that. We've changed the way that we do hiring, recruiting backgrounds, we've streamlined I think I've mentioned this, forgive me if I've mentioned it before, but we could have filled these positions months, years ago, that's kind of a rolling thing, you know, we lose one or two, and then we gain one or two, so it's not necessarily, not necessarily the same positions, but we could have already filled them. I don't think that some of the people that we would have hired, you would have wanted policing our community, I'll just put it that way. So integrity is number one, and I don't think I've had anybody disagree with me on that. Nobody's perfect, but we have to have integrity. So on to something a little more positive. We've had a couple of promotions. Officer Tracy Perdough was promoted to corporal, these are the new corporal positions that you approved here within the last few months. She was promoted roughly, it's been about four months ago, four to five months ago. And then here in just the last two weeks, Officer Chris Shields was promoted to corporal. And they And they are both filling the roles that we designated for them, which is doing investigations, detective work, property and evidence and working as our field training, our primary field training officers. It's also a step up in leadership and serving as the shift officer in charge if the supervisor's gone. Finally, I just wanted to mention three or four community events that we've been involved in here recently. I was glad to see Mr. Pearlman here from Chisholm Trail, but you know what, I'll say this as a chief, I've gotta brag on our officers because we have some really great. I know some of you have met them and I wish, I wish you knew all of them, but we're very fortunate to have some really great police officers. As a chief, it's great for me when I walk in and I find out that the officers and the staff are doing something that I didn't know about and it's good. Not that, not that the bad happens, okay, but. So, there's a couple of things that they organized on their own and you know, I kind of found out about it as we went along, which is fine because it worked out great. We have the clothing drive, which is still in effect from now till November 2nd. It's been going on, it'll be a month total, but clothing drive for Chisholm Trail Elementary, they've been working with the social workers there for winter clothing. So, if anybody has hats, coats, gloves, scarves that they would like to donate, there are boxes here at the city administration center, Leakers, Don Hat and Chevrolet and the senior On October 10th, we had the walk to school day. That's a national thing and Chisholm Trail participated in that. Unfortunately, it was also like the coldest day of the, of the whole fall, so that diminished the crowd somewhat, but there were still a number of kids that came and joined into that. Started here at city hall, stopped down at Anytime Fitness, Park City Baptist Church and then on to Chisholm Trail and added kids as they went along, trying to promote wellness and walking. Finally, we've got for the fall, we have Fun Night at Chisholm Trail Elementary on Friday the 26th and one of our reserve officers will be there. And then trunk or treat at Don Hat and Chevrolet on October 31st and I'll be there. So, if you all want some candy from, from the chief, come to Don Hat and Chevrolet on the 31st. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions if you have.
Ben?
Any?
Chief, thank you all again for everything that you do. I know it's been a little while, so, a couple of months ago, the story was on KSN and great publicity for our, our department and Officer Haas, I think it was just his first day when they all caught that car nabbing suspect there, whatever, but just want to say thank you all for all you do and saw you guys out there on the walk to school day and I was not stopping to take a picture, but I thought it was pretty cool to see all the officers out there. So, thank you to your entire force.
George?
Yeah, I also wanted to piggyback off of that, chief, just the initiative that your officers are taking in the community, I wanted to commend that and the fact that you're out there and you're involved. So, I want to thank you for that as well, but just, just for all that you guys do for the city, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we're gonna hear from our assistant city administrator and HR manager.
Thank you, Mayor, man and council. There are a couple of projects that I just wanted to give you a quick update on. They're the ones that are exciting, they involve our public and they're, they're great projects. The first one is the flag. As you all know, you were involved and selected a flag design. We're excited about that. We've been working with Gardner Design and putting together a plan of how to roll this out and involve our citizens and give it the, the just do, something that would be an exciting celebration for the community. We're putting together a plan that will include some cost and some time elements and we want to be able to present that as a committee to the convention and tourism committee, see if we can get some funding for that. And we're looking at doing something after the first of the year. We get into the holidays and we think that our flag would just be lost. So, we want to get past that and then after the first of the year, we'll have a new flag, new year, it'll be a, a great opportunity for us to really get that as exciting as it should be. The next one is a pedestrian connectivity plan. That is moving along very well as well. And as you know, we've had an open house where we selected ideas that came in from our citizens. We've had the website, we've had drop boxes, we've had opportunities for people to be involved. There's a preliminary plan that's been put together. We're asking for people to come to an open house here on next Monday, the 29th, it's from seven to eight. That will be out and people will be able to see what it looks like, add additional comments and hopefully get this to where it will be into a great plan for us. It will be presented to the planning commission, the November meeting, and then it will be here for council. If you'd like to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Dan? Not seeing any, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, is there a motion? Ben?
It's moved.
And George?
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That motion passes six zero. That brings us to new business, item A, which is consider the acceptance of $185,021.12 from the Park City Land Bank, direct the city clerk to deposit the proceeds into the city's bond and interest fund and abate special assessments on sold property, lots 1 through 13, block H, and lots 46 through 69, block 1 of high ridge, second edition. Doug, did you have anything you want to add to that?
Mayor and council, this is just the direction of the, the action that the land bank took in its meeting prior to the city council meeting. This is directing the funds to the bonded interest fund and also directing the city clerk to take action to abate the, the going forward specials on those specific lots that were sold to Elite USA.
Does anybody have any questions for Doug? Tom?
I'm gonna make a motion, we accept $185,021.12 from Park City Land Bank and direct city clerk to deposit proceeds into city bond and interest fund and abate such special assessments to said properties.
Okay. Ben?
Second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes six zero. That brings us to item B, which is a resolution, amending resolution number 910-2015 relating to the designation of the depository for the city funds and designating those persons authorized to sign checks and orders for the payment of city monies and repealing the original resolution 910-2015. Doug?
Mayor and council, I don't ever, I don't always know that the, that the red highlighting that I do on, makes it to your packet or not, so I don't. What the change is in, in section two of this resolution is merely to add that very last person, deputy city treasurer. Later on in your agenda today, there'll be an appointment of a deputy city treasurer. And so, that would just give one more available person when we're looking to find three people to sign documents, another staff person who's in, who's here and from eight to five, Monday through Friday. So, that is the, that's the amendment, just simply by adding that one person. So, I would recommend that you. I'd recommend that you adopt the resolution.
Okay.
I thought I was getting a raspberry here.
That's what I think.
Ben?
Yes, I'm gonna go ahead and, no raspberry for Doug, I will go ahead and make a motion that we approve the resolution, amending resolution number 910-2015 relating to the designation of the depository for city funds and designating those persons authorized to sign checks and orders for the payment of city monies and repealing the original resolution, number 910-2015.
Is there a second?
George, I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. Dee, would you call the roll?
Joan Lanair?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Sosada?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Randy Bailey? Jim Schrader?
And that passes six zero?
That's resolution number 1008-2018.
All right. And that brings us to item C, which is consider resolution designating agents authorized to transfer funds for investment from the municipal investment pool, to withdraw funds, to issue letters to, of institution and take all other actions deemed necessary or appropriate for the investment of funds. Dee?
Yeah, this is a resolution authorizing the staff to make transactions to the municipal investment pool. The reason it's on the agenda tonight is the change in my position, the finance director and city clerk, so it's changing the name on that to mine.
Tom?
I'm gonna make a motion, we approve this resolution.
And Ben?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. Dee, would you call the roll?
Joan Lanair?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Sosada?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Randy Bailey? Jim Schrader?
And that passes six zero?
And that resolution number is 1009-2018.
All right, that brings us to item D, which is consider the appointment of Deborah Drall to the position of deputy treasurer. She's worked for us for quite a while, works back in planning for us. She would be a, a great asset to have as our deputy treasurer. So, my recommendation is that you guys would make her, appoint her and let's get her in that position. Tom?
I'll make a motion, we approve appointment of Debbie Drall. Just the position of deputy treasurer.
And Ben?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And that passes six zero. The next item on the agenda is item E, which is consider resolution determining the advisability of making of certain internal improvements in the city of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto and authorizing, providing for the making of improvements and ordinance with such funding. Sanitary sewer improvements, phase one, Echo Hills, commercial second addition. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you look at your screens there, the dark outline that's on the map there is the benefit district for the sanitary sewer. Lot two is where Atwoods is, will be located and the sewer will provide sewer to Atwoods, which is under construction.
And it is great to drive by on the highway and see construction under place over there. Okay, does anybody have any questions for Jack? Is there a recommendation from the council? George, did you have a question?
Well, yeah, I just have one question. It's basically, I was just wondering that property down there, when are we gonna take down that sign that says that's a golf course?
Mike, would you like to answer that since that's your property? I think that Echo Hills golf course sign is still off the side of 53rd street. Go ahead, come on up, Mike.
I kinda like it and it just tells you it used to be a golf course, but I mean, I can, I can get it down if that's bothering somebody, but.
I don't know, it says it's a golf course and it's obvious it's not.
Yeah, well, I mean, I keep trying to figure out what I want to do with maybe, you know, I want to memorialize if it was a golf course there somewhere, you know, maybe it's around the pond or something like that. I don't, not necessarily with those signs, but maybe with a plaque or something like that, but I can, I can take those two sides off, so.
I was just curious, it's your business.
Yeah, it's your property, I mean, so.
I was just curious, like I said, it's your business, they watch your mouth.
All right, Ben?
Well, he can stay up here because my question is concerning more that outlet malls of Wichita sign, I'm tired of seeing that sucker up there because we ain't Wichita.
Well, I'm trying to put a little cover on it to put, you know, coming soon, Atwoods. So, that's what I'm working on, on that, so.
Cool. Well, I'd make a, a motion that we adopt the resolution determining the advisability of the making of a certain internal improvement in the city of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, subject to a letter of credit.
Okay, Tom?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. Dee, would you call the roll?
Joan Lanair?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Sosada?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Randy Bailey? Jim Schrader?
And that motion passes six zero?
Resolution number 998-2018.
Thank you. That brings us to item F, which is consider resolution determining the advisability and of making certain internal improvements in the city of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto and authorizing for providing the making of improvements and ordinance with such findings for the water line improvements, phase one, Echo Hills, commercial second. Tom?
I would make a motion, we approve this resolution.
Is there a second? George?
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. All, Dee, would you call the roll?
Joan Lanair?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Sosada?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Randy Bailey? Jim Schrader?
And that passes six zero?
Resolution number 1001-2018.
Thank you, Dee. That brings us to item G, which is consider resolution determining the advisability of making of certain internal improvements and, internal improvements in the city of Park City, Kansas, making certain findings with respect thereto and authorizing and providing for the making of improvements and ordinance with such findings for the street improvements, phase one, Echo Hills, commercial second. Ben?
I would make that motion, subject to a letter of credit.
And Tom?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion. Dee, would you call the roll?
Joan Lanair?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Sosada?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Randy Bailey? Jim Schrader?
And that passes six zero?
Resolution number 1002-2018.
Thank you, Dee. That brings us to item H, which is consider engineering contracts with Bachman Company, PA for design bidding and inspection services for phase one water sewer and streets for Echo Hills. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are all services relating to the three resolutions you just passed. It allows them to start design and, and start bidding out the projects.
Okay. And I know we kinda covered this already, but this is also, we want to make sure we approved this with, subject to receiving the letter of credit. Ben?
Sure, I would make a motion there that we accept the engineering contracts with Bachman Company, PA for design bidding and inspection services for phase one water sewer and street for Echo Hills, subject to a letter of credit.
Tom?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes six zero. Next item on the agenda is just covering various parts and we'll start with George.
I don't have too much, I, I just saw a deal on the news where they had a poll where they said that 85% of the people in this country in this poll is fed up with the political correctness that goes on in this country and I find myself in 85%. Like they said, you know, there's about 15% of our population controlling what the rest of us do and that's kind of the reverse. And you know, I, I see the need for some of it, some of it is, is needed, but I'm one of those people that think it's just carried to four. In fact, it's carried to four, sometimes it's ridiculous. If, if, if I look over and see some, some man that's got on a, work with, got on a nice suit and a tie and I say, "Man, you look nice today." I'm not harassing the man, I'm paying him a compliment, but it's got that ridiculous. And that's just my thoughts on a sudden.
Thank you, George. Tom?
George and I had an opportunity a couple of weeks ago to go out to WSU and tour the Wichita-Sedgwick County Training Center, the law enforcement training center. They have a nice nine and a half million dollar facility out there. It was quite enlightening, some of the stuff that they've got going on in there, so. Also, Jack and I were talking earlier, or late last- Also, Jack and I were talking earlier, or late last week, our West Sixty-first Street improvement and Sixty-first and Broadway intersection improvement got approved and is being passed on to the state. Jack's working on that now, I think, to get that in process for engineering and stuff.
Went the mail today.
That's it.
All right.
But I do have one other thing, Sedgwick County's got a drug summit this Thursday, I think the chief's going, or somebody from his group will be going there, I plan on attending too.
All right, I just want to point out one thing real quick that I don't, I don't want to fly by that I failed to mention, just, new home permits issued through the end of September was sixty-two. Last year, we were forty-two, and if I have the correct number in my head, we've had another fourteen-plus that we'll pull in October. So our new housing permits are, is, is phenomenal this year compared to what we have been, so now we're back in that pre-'08 housing permit era, so that's very exciting to see here in the city, so. Just, I, I think that goes to not only staff, but also governing body for, you know, the home incentives, the different things we've done, the way we've went out and purchased those properties that went under, and, and now they're being built out on. So that's exciting to see some of those, those lots that people weren't paying taxes on, that we went back and got, offered some incentives, and now we have houses sitting on them. So it's exciting to see those rooftops popping up in the city. Melvin?
I have nothing.
Ben?
Sure, I might sound like a announcer at a church here for a second, but I've got a few different things. Friday night, the BMX is having their first annual pumpkin trunk retreat event there at the, at the BMX Park, so encourage you to go on out there and support them in that. Saturday from four to seven is the Fall Festival there at Hat McLean, so coming out, I know the park board's been putting a lot of work into getting that ready, so looking forward to that, that's this Saturday. Also on Saturday, it's National Take Back Day, which is an opportunity for the public to turn in their unused prescriptions. We have an opioid issue that has plagued our country for some time, and so one of the things that they're doing is having this Take Back Day. You can go to takebackday.dea.gov to find a location nearest you to be able to take in those unused prescriptions. And then finally, I'll be hosting my convos over coffee on November third from nine-thirty to ten-thirty at the Daylight Donuts in town.
George?
Yeah, just to piggyback off that, our Fall Fest is this Saturday from four to seven at Hat McLean Park. We have a lot of activities going on for the public. It's an event that draws four to five hundred people, so everybody come out and have a good time. We'll also have a Halloween costume contest as well, so bring the kids out. I think we had fifty or sixty people last year dress up, so it's, it's a good opportunity for folks to get out, so everybody come out, thank you.
John?
I have nothing.
Okay.
I will make a motion, we adjourn.
And Ben?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes six-zero.